All right, we have Eric and Russell Klaus are going to talk to us a little bit about I-40 in the Boulevard. Ms. Corringer?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. There's obviously been a tremendous amount of discussion over the past several weeks, and as city staff continues to work very closely with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, we thought that it'd be appropriate this morning to bring you up to speed on the current status of the new Boulevard project for Oklahoma City. As I get ready to begin, I want to give a little bit of thanks to city staff and also several of our ODOT officials that are here with us this morning. I know that Gary Evans.
See, David Strab.
Also got Paul Green that's also here today with us, and their contributions have been helpful in helping us get this together for you and also the citizens today. I think one of the things as we visit about the Boulevard is that this isn't a project that began yesterday. As we recall, and I've got a few slides here to just kind of set the stage on the project history, this is a project that actually began back in 1995 where there was a project study approved. As we'll recall, the Interstate 40 had several fracture critical areas. It was laden with potholes. ODOT was continually repairing that bridge. There were safety concerns. There were things that were happening to the Interstate 40 that caused for its either need of rehabilitation or relocation. So in 1995, there was a project study approved, and there was a lot of discussion at this council at that time regarding alignments, routes, but ultimately, there was an option D that was selected in that time period. Environmental clearance processes began, and there were also technical advisory and citizen committees that were formed. In 1998, there were several environmental impact studies that were completed. I've listed just a few of those here, but traffic analysis, financial analysis, there were noise studies, there were various studies that were completed in this timeframe. Moving forward to February of 2000, I think one of the things that we talk about in a project that is of this duration is that downtown has undergone a lot of change. We've had projects like the original maps projects be completed. We've had Project 180. We've got Future Maps III. We have a series of projects that are underway. But in 2000, there was a land use and mitigation plan that started discussing the specifics of the Boulevard. The project of the I-40 relocation included the Boulevard project from the start, and the details of the alignment were there, at least in form. But this study, I think, is very important because this is the concept that modified the Boulevard for the best aspects of both a freeway and also a service Boulevard. It described the use of the Boulevard both on an elevated and ground level portions. In November of 2001, a final environmental impact statement was issued. There were several issues that ODOT was forced to deal with with relocations. And then moving forward, in May of 2000, Federal Highway Administration issued the Record of Decision. And so this is really the starting point of the conversation today. This is where the option D was formally adopted by FHWA. There was the construction of the Boulevard and the existing I-40 alignment, and it also included the construction of the Skydance Bridge that we just recently reopened. Those were all mitigating factors of this Record of Decision. When I went back and researched these documents, and as we're bringing ourselves up to speed, I've been asked many questions about why portions of the Boulevard are being elevated, where did some of that come from? And so, if you'll click, J.C., I've excerpted this straight out of the Record of Decision just as a point of information, but I mentioned this, that we're still working with this. But I'll just read this. "The selected alternative will provide a six-lane at-grade Boulevard in the existing I-40 right-of-way from east of the Union Pacific Tracks at the I-235 interchange to the west of Walker Avenue. From west of Walker to western, the existing I-40 bridge will be rehabilitated. From Western Avenue west to Agnew, the existing facility be converted to a divided Boulevard." So the concept of portions of the Boulevard being elevated were part of that Record of Decision in 2002. But subject to a lot of downtown development, we are seeing a lot of changes, and so there are a lot of questions about what we ought to expect from the city with our partners with ODOT on what we should actually construct. There was a Boulevard Concept Report published in August of 2007, and this is where a lot of the finer details started to come into play. This is the transition recommendations as we move from highway speeds to Boulevard speeds. This would be reducing from 60 miles an hour that you might experience on I-44 down to 25 miles an hour, which is what we expect in the heart of the Boulevard. There's a lot of focus on the area between Walker and Oklahoma avenues. It also describes parking requirements, lane narrowing, landscaping, speed zones, and pavement treatments. So when we talk about the Boulevard, it's really more than just a new bypass for the Interstate 40. This is something that is an entrance to downtown Oklahoma City, something that we expect to be aesthetically pleasing, that addresses traffic needs, but is also a walkable and friendly environment for those that are downtown. In October of 2009, there was a revised traffic impact and comprehensive traffic study that was ordered, and this was mainly due to the changes that we were starting to see in Project 180. This would be to address the conversion of one-way to two-way streets. This would also start to address a lot of the amenities that were starting to become downtown elements. And so we continue to look at and analyze and investigate the changing downtown environment and what the Boulevard needs to be. And this is in 2009, and we're continuing to do those studies today. But with that said, I just wanted to set the stage for some of the history and where we find ourselves today. Our partners with ODOT began a process with us and engaged late last year with planners. They've engaged Jeff Speck as a walkability consultant. They have landscape consultants, and they've started talking about the ideas of the Boulevard. What does Oklahoma City want? And so with that, we've started brainstorming. We've started collecting a lot of that data, and there's some visuals that I'll be able to show you today on some of those concepts. But I'll preface that with, we haven't made any final decisions. There's still some study yet to go, and there's some questions that have been raised that need to be answered. When we talk about the status of the project, obviously, the deconstruction's well underway. I think it's very obvious, as we look to our south, there's several of the sections that are completely removed. We're obviously in the area of Bricktown now. The final stages will remove the bridge that's over E.K. Gaylord. So this is some of that status. These bridge structures, many of those are being relocated, as you already know, to other bridges in counties across Oklahoma, so it's very much a green project with reuse of a lot of that steel. And this is ongoing and expected to be finished by the end of the year. When we visit about the alignment, the alignment of the Boulevard extends from Pennsylvania Avenue to Byers Avenue. There's five construction projects that ODOT is contemplating: a west section, a bridge section, core section, the railroad bridge at E.K. Gaylord, and then the east end, which is basically in Bricktown. Many of you have probably realized now that the interstate is down that Southwest Third Street, which was adjacent to the Boulevard, is a space that's now reclaimed, and we have some opportunities to utilize that right-of-way with also the ODOT right-of-way to help some of the alignment with the new Boulevard. There's opportunities with a narrower Boulevard and a wide ODOT and Southwest Third Street right-of-way to create new development opportunities. And so hopefully, I'll be able to show those to you in just a moment, too. Now, we mentioned earlier in the Record of Decision that it was a six-lane planned Boulevard. One of the first concerns that the city expressed was that it was too wide. We do have a preference for four lanes, and ODOT has received that, and they're working with us to make sure that that's, in fact, true. So we're looking at a four-lane divided Boulevard with a median with parking lanes on both sides. So as I give you this picture, what you see on Reno Avenue today as a part of Project 180 is very similar to what we're thinking the Boulevard will be, just with a wider median, probably more amenities, but at least in that scope. 11-foot lanes, 20 to 30 mile-an-hour traffic speeds, but that's probably the best representation downtown that I could tell you about today. The extra is also the 15 feet of sidewalks on both sides. Again, walkability is key. There's been several questions about the at-grade portion currently, and again, no decisions have been finalized, but currently, we're looking at a proposed at-grade portion that extends from Dewey, which you can see with the blue line on the left side of the map that I've shown you here, crossing downtown and extending just approximately to the Harkins Theater in Bricktown, so just east of Oklahoma Avenue. So several of the slides that I've got will include this as part of the description. The next series of slides, I'm sorry.
Could I just, to give us some context, can you share how, what distance that is? It's a little bit less than a mile, as I understand.
It's about nine and a half blocks total. So if we look at it from a city blocks perspective, it's nine and a half blocks, multiple intersections, new intersections that will be added to the downtown streetscape.
Okay, I should know that, but how, what is the distance of a city block?
It varies.
It's about 3,000 feet.
It's approximately 4,000 feet.
Three or four.
And we're, you know, how about if we come back with that exact number, because it's a known number? And we're throwing out blocks and feet, and we'll come back with the exact number on that. Because it's known.
It's hard for people to visualize what that is without kind of having a reference point to what the distance is.
And I may mention some generalizations. I mean, there's still some study that's underway at the bridge at E.K. Gaylord, exactly where that ramp surfaces east. You know, Oklahoma Avenue is obviously a major intersection, but the west and the east is still somewhat in the air, but we will get that to you. I've broken the presentation down into those five sections that I previously mentioned, starting with the west. And when we look at the Penn to Western section, under design currently, ODOT would like to bid that this fall, early winter. The goal is to rehabilitate those existing bridges and maintain the elevated on-field condition. And those bridges are at Pennsylvania, Virginia, Indiana, Blackwelder, and Klein. The landscaping is something that is additional to ODOT. That's something that the city anticipates doing under separate contract. So we have set aside city bond funds to make sure that we enhance the Boulevard to a level that is the vision of Oklahoma City. This is an aerial view of that west section. You'll see Pennsylvania Avenue on the left. You'll see those bridge sections that are anticipated to be rebuilt. You'll see that a number of the existing on-and-off ramps that were part of the old Interstate 40 are expected to be maintained by ODOT in this design. On the right-hand side of the drawing, we approach Western Avenue, next slide, and this is that Blackwelder and Western Avenue portion, Western being the end of the green line on the right of the drawing. So this is the current proposal. Obviously, if you also note at Western Avenue, the existing off-ramps eastbound, and there are two, will still provide access going to South Klein on up to Western. There are also anticipation of maintaining that existing on-ramp that was from Sheridan Avenue that some of us might have been familiar with. ODOT is planning to reincorporate that also into the Boulevard as well. So when we look at access from Western Avenue, there's going to be multiple opportunities here in this location to actually get onto and off of the new Boulevard.
Eric, may I go back just one more slide and clarify again for our listeners? I have been confused in the last week, well, I've been confused a lot, but I've been confused in the last week or two about some of the discussion of at-grade, elevated at-grade, and what that means.
Okay.
So what we just looked at on this west section is elevated on dirt.
Which is existing. So if you were to look at this today, you're going to see that there are bridges at each of the white boxes that are shown on this drawing. So these are underpasses. The actual Boulevard would go over each of those intersections. It is on dirt, but it's embanked, and so there's not any walls. It tapers, it's grass, it tapers back, but it is elevated so that you can get each of those crossings achieved vertically.
Right, but I think just from a language standpoint, when we talk about bridges, people again are thinking about elevated with posts and the ability to sleep underneath them.
So this would not be that. This would not be a long bridge. These would be very short bridges over the streets but on dirt. So there would not be a place to stand underneath the Boulevard at these locations.
I think the key for this section, it's not significantly dissimilar from what's there today as far as the grade and the slopes. Now, the width of the lanes and the new roads and the landscaping, that's all different. But for what's out there in this particular section is not significantly different from the kind of up and down of the road. It's kind of a gentle up and down of the road and those banks that are there today.
So in all fairness, you know, I think a large part of this discussion is it's not significantly different, and I think there was some thought, at least on behalf of some people, that it was going to be significantly different.
I understand.
And so I'm just trying to clarify as much as we can kind of what the issues are.
Eric, may we go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Those two ramps on the far right, those are exit ramps. Is that correct?
They're eastbound exit ramps.
And the one, two, kind of in the center, would be an on-ramp?
Right.
And is, I guess it's now going back to our city manager, will Sheridan allow for, is that going to be, is that one-way going west Sheridan?
Sheridan towards the west end of that is one-way currently.
Yes. Anyway, what I'm trying to get to is, you know, there's a little bit of congestion as you try to get on the new I-40 at the Western on-ramp, and as City Manager Couch has told me many times, once this is all completed, I think that will alleviate some of those problems, and we have now two choices to get onto I-40 heading west from this area.
Well, and the last point I'll make about this particular section, if you look at Western Avenue, so there are only two on and off ramps to the new interstate, one at Western and one at E.K. Gaylord. You know, we lost several ramps as a part of the relocation of I-40. The Boulevard West is a key function of helping traffic get out of downtown and into, but currently, we have a lot of commuter traffic downtown at 5 o'clock at 8:00 in the morning. We're having a lot of congestion in the Western Avenue corridor. Thunder games, obviously, a lot of time to be able to disperse that kind of traffic. This west section, this west connection to Interstate 44 is really key to alleviating a lot of that concern today.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, can I, well, just one more question about that, going back to that slide before. Currently, it comes down and it touches down at-grade or at-street level at Douglas.
Yes.
So one potential alternative is to have it begin to go upgrade towards the new I-40 at Douglas, because that's a natural point where right now, it's coming down to street level.
I think that's possible, yes. I think there are some things that are, from an engineering perspective or from a traffic perspective, we could do that, yes.
Thank you.
Before you leave this slide, Eric, there's been discussion about once the, this is a DOT project, and the DOT money is going to build it, but once it's built, it'll become the city's responsibility to maintain. Where does that delineate on that map there? Where does the highway responsibility stop and the city responsibility start?
Everything that we talk about, these five sections, will be city responsibility from Interstate 44 all the way to Interstate 235, or excuse, 235-35. We will be the owners, the city of Oklahoma City will be the owners of the entire Boulevard, everything that I show you today.
From where it exits I-40?
From Pennsylvania.
Okay, so once it leave, once you leave I-40, even though you're crossing over, back over I-40, you're still going to be on a city-maintained Boulevard at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So from the, from the beginning of the construction, once it's completed, it's all ours, is that right, as far as the maintenance of it?
There's an acceptance process that the city will go through with ODOT to make sure that it was built and that we're in agreement, but yes, it will be all ours when it's finished.
And as far as the design that is presently being presented, ODOT really doesn't have anything to do with the design other than accepting what we recommend, is that right?
I mean, generally speaking, I would say that ODOT's, it is ODOT's project. It's funded through ODOT and the federal highways, and so from a project standpoint, obviously, they've got, they've got other elements besides design. They've got cost, they've got time, and other components of the project that they also have to manage. So as we look at changes, or we look at additions, or subtractions, or those types of things, I mean, those all need to be weighed in by ODOT since it's theirs. But we have the ability with the city, and as I mentioned with some of our bond funding, that if we have enhancements that we want to engage, we have the ability to do that from the city's perspective. We have our own funding source to do enhanced landscaping, hardscaping, or any of the elements that are not currently included in the ODOT project.
And Eric, I do think it's fair to point out kind of imbalance here, that when you went through the history, you talked about all the environmental work that was done and all those issues. A number of the things that have been discussed would require that those things be reopened and looked at again. So from ODOT's perspective, it does cause some more significant challenges. Is that correct?
I think the only thing that needs to be reopened from the federal standpoint is the request by the city to narrow the Boulevard from six lanes to four lanes. And so that's part of the issue that's being looked at. I don't believe anything else is outside of the Record of Decision.
Okay, but our desire to move the entry point into Bricktown?
Working with this on. Yeah, they've done everything we've really asked ODOT to do, that they've worked on as far as the access versus compress on Oklahoma, over on the east side, the lengthening of the bridge, making the bridge wider to make it more pedestrian-friendly at the bridge at the railroad. They've been working with this on. Several different alternatives with the walkability folks, and actually bringing in the walkability folks was something Mayor Cornet asked, we do, and they've been really cooperative to get that in place, having several different options for what the Boulevard may look like at the main at-grade, narrowing it from the six lanes to the four lanes, adding trees and landscaping and other features. They've been very accommodating and working with this on.
I guess, I'm just trying to impress that I think from a layperson's standpoint, there are some big issues that could involve making it much more complicated for ODOT.
That's potentially.
An obvious part of the discussion, so.
And I think they could advise us as such. If we were to bring some ideas, they could let us know what the impacts are.
Eric, one other item that would not be addressed today, but there might be a distant day when an intersection might make sense at Dewey, or perhaps even further east in Bricktown. Are those types of considerations being at least looked at when we accept this design from ODOT? That we might want to do something 20 or 50 years from now at both ends?
So from a planning's perspective, I would tell you the answer is yes. We're obviously engaging planning in the conversations, and so when we look at long-range future projects, you know, is that a 20-year, 30-year, 50-year-plus plan? That is going into consideration, so.
So could we put an intersection at Dewey in some distant day based on the design that we're accepting?
I think that's possible, yes.
Okay. What about in Bricktown when you get past Oklahoma?
It would probably get difficult there because then you start the upward approach back to Interstate 35, and there's obviously some elevations that are already existing there when you make those connections to the interstate system. So that would be more difficult in that direction.
What is the engineering standard for a grade coming down from where this one's going to be elevated to get over the canal and entering to where it would land in Bricktown? What's acceptable and what's up for negotiation?
You know, it's probably subject to, I would tell you, the engineering grades are probably more aggressive than what we'd be willing to accept, and so, you know, you could go upwards of almost 10%, which is something quite steep, but I don't know that we'd want to accept that. I mean, you start getting into factors of safety where you have pedestrian walkways. It would be hard to walk up a hill that steep. When we start talking about sidewalks that are adjacent to this Boulevard, again, we're trying to talk about a walkable but also a Boulevard that moves traffic. So in this case, we're looking at something less, and I think I can mention a little bit more about that on the east section. One of our reasons for picking Oklahoma intersection versus compress is it allows us to flatten that grade into Bricktown more than if we were going to try to get to compress early. And I've got a drawing, I can kind of show that just a little bit later in the presentation.
Well, I'd like it to get to the ground as fast as possible, but I agree, you know, in inclement weather, you don't need people coming off the interstate and where the road might not be in normal conditions. But the sooner we can get it to grade for the potential for a future intersection, I think the better off, you know, those future generations are going to be.
And staff concurs. Within reason, that makes sure that it's safe and passable, but yes, we agree.
Okay, well, I'd just like to make sure that, you know, maybe if we could start the down Klein earlier, I don't know what sort of clearance we need over the canal, but if we can get that to grade earlier over there, I think we're going to be better off.
Well, and recall that there's been some ODOT construction already completed. I think before the old interstate came down, I think a lot of us noticed the construction of the ramp that's kind of in just mid-air on the south side of the old interstate. So there were some plans that were already created where those have to be attached now. And so some of the previous construction is going to be some of the limitations that we might have on some of those grades today.
Okay, go ahead and continue.
Eric, quick question. Could you go back to the slide that showed Pennsylvania?
Sure.
Now, Pennsylvania is that intersection way to the left on this slide.
On the far left, yes.
But then you said that we, the city, would pick up everything to I-44. Did I miss?
From Pennsylvania would be our responsibility forward.
Pennsylvania to the right?
To the right, to the east.
To the east.
I think he said 44, but I don't think that's.
It's not what I meant, Pennsylvania.
Okay, so we're just talking about picking up the responsibility from Pennsylvania to the east?
Yes.
And getting to Pennsylvania would be ODOT's responsibility to maintain that portion of road?
Yes, and that's under construction today. I mean, you can actually see that construction. The bridge piers are there as it's crossing Reno.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just ask for clarification, since Skip brought it up now? I just wanted to follow up. What, if, we've seen several reports in the papers, comments from ODOT, that they don't want to build anything that we don't want. And if you could get past the concerns that Meg brought up with the Federal Highway Administration, if you could study at-grade alternatives in a timely manner, and you came up with a consensus on an at-grade alternative, and it didn't result in significant delays or cost increases, then is it ODOT's position, and I guess they can answer themselves, that we, that we would be, have, be able to design an at-grade alternative?
The answer's yes. So we can take that opportunity, and we've actually already started that ball rolling to look at additional options for whatever solution. You know, I would hate to venture and say it's elevated or at-grade. There may be some things that we haven't talked about today that are possible, and we'd like to investigate all of those, but the answer is yes. We want to take that time to do so.
Okay.
So Eric, is that, or City Manager, does that comment go far enough that we can specifically ask that the city hire a consultant to look at these various alternatives and to help us get some answers as to what's possible and what's not possible? We've kind of bounced this ball back and forth between the city and ODOT, and I think at this point.
If it's council's desire, we can go ahead and hire a traffic engineer and come up with some concepts that we could submit to ODOT to take a look at and see what they do as far as cost and timing and functionality.
It's a little premature in Eric's presentation, but I think this is an opportunity. I'd like to make that request if my colleagues would agree.
As we move forward, courtesy of ODOT and their consultants, you know, one of the things we wanted to make important today was some of the visions that they're actually thinking about. When we talk about the old interstate system being a concrete deck on piers, you know, it's not the desire of the city as we move forward. And as we look into that west section, I mean, we are looking at a divided Boulevard, again, two lanes east, two lanes west. We're talking about a center median that has the ability to plant trees, green, hardscapes, use of color. And again, so as we transform from the old interstate to the new Boulevard, I mean, there are a lot of ideas to make sure that this is something that is attractive as you come in or out of Oklahoma City. So I use these as just a few of those examples. The bridges that we talked about, perhaps that would cross Penn or the other streets, if you look, they're actually discussing the opportunities to provide a light well. This would be an opening between the two lanes that would provide natural light to the area below. And so ODOT is actually forward-thinking on a lot of the design that they're presenting to us, and so we're happy to receive that in consideration. As we move to this bridge section, and again, I don't want the title to be subject to us not looking at other alternatives. There's obviously various alternatives, but the bridges that are currently proposed or at least the intersections and the streets that are of concern are Western, Classen, Reno, and Chertel. Obviously, this is in an area of town that's already congested to a level of a lot of traffic signals, a lot of streets that converge in a short span, and there is a proposed retaining wall system that is one of the options. But generally speaking, this is part of a project that we have some time to look at. They'd like, they, ODOT would like to bid this in the spring of 2013. And then again, I mentioned, the landscaping is something that would be separately contracted by the city. This is that section that's of most discussion today, and this is one of the alternatives as we look at the bridge section crossing those major streets. You can see them there in the center of the drawing. So the white portion is this critical area. There's several concepts as we move on to the next slide. This is what maybe that typical bridge section could look like. One of the things that makes this different than the west section if this was an option is that we're not looking to lay back those earthen embankment walls to take up any more property than required. These would be vertical walls, possibly colored concrete, you know, maximizing the space that's available for development on both sides. It's also an embankment. It's on fill. And one of the reasons is to make sure that we can landscape it. And so as a consideration from the city, and we did not want to build, again, another bridge that had a lot of the piers, was being able to plant trees in the medians and on the shoulders along this section. But there's also some other items that are being discussed, and these are for visual only. These are conceptual in nature, but obviously, roundabouts are under consideration. There's several that have been posted online. ODOT's looking at some of those, and I think that probably to best address the questions in this particular section, a consultant is probably a wise move on our part to make sure that we've evaluated all the considerations. But just to show what some of the complicated nature is of this, this is a roundabout option that includes 10 different legs. Four of those, or excuse me, eight of those on four streets are critical. I mean, we're talking about Classen Boulevard, we're talking about Reno, we're talking about Western. Western being one of the only two downtown accesses to Interstate 40, and so it's quite complicated in this area. And again, I think it's something we can further look at. As we look at this next one, this was just another alternative that ODOT was brainstorming and assisted us with just to show that there wasn't a single idea. This is one that would actually be possibly a proposed elevated roundabout, but I'm not sure that there's a lot of moving forward on this one, and it's quite complicated as well. When we look at the core section, this is really the section, oh, I'm sorry, we've actually, When we look at the core section, this is really the section, oh, I'm sorry. We've actually, when we finish this discussion, there's been a lot of questions about the planning of, future development, a lot of those needs. And so, we thought it might be most appropriate. Russell and I have communicated somewhat some of the future needs of this section, so I wanted to invite Russell up to make a few statements as well.
I just wanted to preface consideration of planning issues there by just sort of taking us back to Coeur d'Alene and the scope of how that project was conceived. At the time, when the boundaries of that planning area were drawn, it was based on the fact that that at-grade portion would be essentially from Walker to Oklahoma, recognized on the west end that it hit at Dewey, but the first signal intersections would be at Oklahoma and Walker. For that reason, we didn't plan to not look at that area to the west, centered around Western, centered around the section that Eric has just talked about at Western Classen, Reno, et cetera. We recognized that has difficulties there in terms of being able to move traffic in the area. Coeur d'Alene was based on the assumption that that was already settled by ODOT in terms of what they were going to do there, and that was essentially a reconstruction of what was there. I hadn't seen, or I guess Eric hadn't seen either, the proposed retaining wall option. I would have some concerns with that. I think that that would constitute a barrier from downtown to that area, to the west. From a planning perspective, we have a lot going on, obviously, in the downtown area. We're putting, expending a lot of energy and as much funds as we have available, which is limited from a public side in terms of supporting development in all these other areas, Coeur d'Alene being obviously the largest one. It has a very long-term redevelopment timeframe. I've estimated in the past 50 years. And we will have to be aggressive about facilitating and catalyzing that development in that area since it's not something that we as a city are familiar with to any great degree at this point. We have seen success in the Bricktown and Deep Deuce areas. We're also seeing a lot of renaissance in the Automobile Alley, Midtown, Medical Business District, and now in the Film Exchange and Arts District of downtown. Those still have a long way to go. I don't believe that those will be built out in probably 30 years plus or minus. I think we've got a lot of particular development potential there. The area that we're talking about here to the west, I know there's been discussion that this will form a barrier in terms of being able to support development on that western side. I think it's a different case over there because each of these other redevelopment areas have great proximities, either to downtown, to the river, to the Entertainment District, et cetera. So, that's what's been able to facilitate their development and their success and the interest in that area. This area over here really doesn't have that proximity, those essential core bones, whether those be historic buildings or the proximities, as well as I think would be necessary to facilitate that same kind of development interest. There will definitely be a development response over there as a result of that Western Exchange, without a doubt. But I don't think it'll be the same style of urban development that we're seeing in the other areas. I don't believe that it's going to be as attractive for residential or some of the other retail that we've seen. It's probably more related to the proximity to the freeway. It's going to take time to develop out the west side of downtown, which I think will happen. And, you know, clearly, there are trends there. There are other opportunities relate to the new police and courts buildings and perhaps some consolidations in that area that would facilitate development along Main Street, connect that out, as well as along Sheridan with what the Film Exchange District is doing. Once that is built out there, then I think you've got that opportunity then for that connection to the west side of what's being proposed as the elevated retaining wall section. The best anchor that we have in that area is the Farmers Market. It's been sitting there basically underperforming, I think, in everybody's mind for a long period of time. Had its great potential, not just the Farmers Market building, but there are a whole bunch of little smaller one-story brick buildings around there that would create a fabulous district. It does need to be connected. And ultimately, you know, you may look, and this would be decades to come, but to connect out through that, out to Stockyards, and then you've got that connection, where you've got a reason for people to go from downtown to the Farmers Market to Stockyards because there are things to do there. At this point in time, it's separated. I don't think the redevelopment of that is so much impacted by what we've got there at this point in time as rather the context there and the separation from downtown. There's too much no man's land in between currently the Farmers Market and downtown. But it's important that, once we do develop the west end of downtown, that that connection is able to be made there. So, I do have concerns about a retaining wall as somewhat of a barrier. I guess my concept of this was that it was to be rehabilitated as such. And I know there are issues with that. I know we've had a lot of homeless sheltering under the underpass there, but those are issues that could be addressed in other ways with lighting, et cetera.
And no decision's been made on that, whether it's a retaining wall area or an open area. That decision has yet to be made as we go forward.
And clearly, from a planning perspective, I think, you know, doing at-grade would be the preferable option. I just, I also recognize that from an engineering perspective, that's very complicated. I don't think either of the roundabout options will probably work. But there are other options, and I think it's worth looking at in terms of what those may be. Could be a double roundabout. It could be some other, it could be some closing of some streets that would facilitate that. I don't know that all of those streets may be necessary.
You know, I think it's important to talk about, a little bit about the roundabout idea because it has been floated and it's been connected all the time with pedestrian-friendly. And there is nothing pedestrian-friendly about a roundabout.
Well, the smaller ones, yes. I mean, roundabouts really work well if you've got four or five roads going into it. That's the predominant use. When you try to accommodate 10 roads, I don't think I've, I'm not familiar with any around the world, and the separation between each of those legs, that would not work. There's no, I don't, you know, just from my planning perspective, I can't see that working.
Well, Russell, even at 10th and Walker, which in my mind is a very successful roundabout, and I drive it, you know, 10 times a day, it is not easy to walk around.
No.
It's made the area pedestrian-friendly, but it is not easy to walk a distance around the roundabout itself, so...
Fortunately, it's narrowed down at the neck when you enter the roundabout, so, you know, there's possibilities there. But you do have some site constraint issues. If you're crossing from north to south there on the east side, on the west side on 10th, then you may not see the vehicles coming around the other way if you're not paying attention.
Right. I just think we need to be careful.
It is a learning experience, but other parts of the world, people have learned it. So, I don't think that, you know, we're any different in terms of learning capability, hopefully.
Russell, I want to address that roundabout issue in a minute. But in terms of planning, I mean, this really isn't a 30-year decision, right? It's a 50 or a 70-year decision. And if we're talking about, as we talked about earlier, massive development potentially on the west, in the West Park area that then jumps across the boulevard, and you've taken up developable land along the boulevard with the convention center, with your reserving land to the west of the convention center for potential future convention center expansion, then why wouldn't it be reasonable to expect that in 30, 40, 50, 60 years, you could have development along this boulevard with all that traffic?
Well, I would agree with that. I would agree. I believe it is a long-term timeframe. That area is pretty healthy industrial at this point. It may not look good, which I think is another issue, since Western Avenue is now one of the major gateways into the city that, you know, we should look at trying to improve that. But I would agree that in the longer term, it's probably going to transition. But at this point in time, it's healthy industrial.
So, you get past the traffic and the cost. Again, I just want to re, what I hear you saying is that the preferred alternative would be at-grade, everything else being equal?
Everything else being equal, yes.
Thank you.
In reference to the proposed plan of the roundabout, if you look at any other alternatives in reference to at-grade, is this the only plan that's been presented as an option?
Well, I think, as Eric mentioned, that's a concept plan. I know other concept plans have been presented out there in the public, and some of those have ignored some of the existing major thoroughfares. They've, Reno and Western just sort of laid over the top of it. I think the intent was to present the concept rather than to design it. So, I don't think at this point in time, we have anything that we could really talk to the merits of a roundabout versus other alternative means of being able to move the traffic through that area. Because as I said, I don't think that the two proposals that Eric had presented, as presented to us from DOT would work. But there may be other options. I mean, we're not, we don't have our experience here designing roundabouts.
But it's, it's, there has been some experience, and if you look at 2030 and I-35, would you consider, would you say that that was a concept of a roundabout?
No.
Oh, yeah. Original one.
Were you here?
Well, I'm not familiar with that one.
Or would you say that the Classen and Northwest Expressway, would that be similar to something of a roundabout when it was designed?
I wasn't here at that point. I don't, I really don't understand the merits of why that failed. I think part of the issue with our difficulties with roundabouts here is perhaps we tried to bite off more than really works, and that was probably the problem with the Classen circle. As I said, they work better for less legs entering and leaving, and with enough gap between each of the legs to be, for people to be able to pull in and out. There's also a familiarity aspect to it. With only a couple of roundabouts in the city, it's difficult for people to become familiar with it. I think over the six years or so that the circle at 10th and Walker has been operating, people have gotten better at it. The people who use it regularly know how it works. And it's the most simple possible facilitator of traffic. You just look to your left, there's nobody there, you go. But if you sit there at Kaiser's or somewhere else and you look at it, a lot of people are still just pulling up to it and stopping. They don't know how to use it. Now, if you had 100 or more roundabouts in the city, everybody would know how to use them. It wouldn't be an issue. But that's not what we have, and I'm not proposing that. But that's how these have become accepted in other parts of the world.
Well, I would just point out, again, I want to talk about it in a minute, but there is a difference between a roundabout and a traffic circle and what's been presented to the public in the paper and in other, we've talked about traffic circles, and the Classen is a good example. But there is an important difference. A roundabout, the traffic entering has to yield to the traffic that's already within the roundabout, and that's an important difference. Traffic circles really aren't built to any significant degree anymore. And so, that terminology should probably be jettisoned from our discussion.
I'll let Eric conclude.
May I make a quick, just a comment? We've got a project here that is being driven by multiple objectives. And I think we need to realize, in the impassioned support we have here, that this thing is liable to be a compromise at the end, and there'll be some adjustment perhaps to accommodate future development, some adjustment, obviously, to make this thing as functional as possible to get people in and out of Oklahoma City. But nobody is going to get entirely what they want. And I think we need to realize that this is a compromise. There are multiple objectives. Whenever you have a project with multiple objectives, there's some compromise included in that. And as we go forward, I think people ought to recognize the fact that, no matter how impassioned they are about a particular project or a particular solution, that we may have to have a compromise that gives up some people if we have to buy them forward.
I really agree with Mr. Ryan. This is a very complex area. It's just hard. I mean, I've looked at it and looked at it, and we all have, or a lot of us have. And there's just not a good solution that accomplishes absolutely what everybody wants. Maybe there's some compromise to get in into it, but it's keeping some level of traffic functionality to get the people in and out of downtown, as well as to try to get it back down to ground and minimize the barriers is hard. Some streets are probably going to have to be sacrificed as going through. And when you do that, there's going to be people along those streets that aren't going to be happy with that. But you're not going to be able to do everything, and it's not going to be able to look like it is today without some compromises we go forward.
And Pat, I totally agree with you. I mean, this is one of the first issues I feel like I've worked on that has, I mean, it's a true conflict. We have two competing issues. We do need to move traffic. We've made so many changes downtown. We have created, I mean, some of our own success has created some of these issues. But we do have some very legitimate urban planning policies and, you know, really foundational planning issues to address that we want to keep in mind for future development. So, it's a very complex situation, and I think one that is going to require us to blend these two ideas and prepare, be, put ourselves in a place where we can make some changes 15, 20, and 30 years out in the future. I think we have to prepare for change.
Thank you. The, as we move forward to this third section of part of this presentation, we're talking about this core section, and I would tell you that this is probably one that we'll see probably the most progress in the soonest, at least from a perspective of integration with the MAPS III projects. We're talking about that section that goes from Dewey to EK Gaylord. It's also in a design phase, but it's a very early design phase. Staff is working very closely with the MAPS III subcommittees for the park, for the convention center, for transit. But generally speaking, as we talk about this core section, we're talking about a widened median, a 40-foot-wide median, an alignment that possibly could shift to the south. And again, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we have an opportunity with Third Street to actually incorporate that with the existing I-40 right-of-way and be able to move that boulevard around to encourage future development on both sides.
Quick question, Eric. Will the median be wide enough to accommodate the trackage for the streetcar?
It would be possible, although I think there's some pros and cons with that too, but it could, yes.
Okay, thank you. But it has a potential for that. If in the final analysis, our compromise recommends trackage there, we could accommodate.
I think it could. I mean, obviously, as we transition to different sections, we've just need to take existing traffic in. But yes, it can be. This is that core section. You'll see on the left side of the page is Lee Avenue. You'll see the intersections beginning at Walker, Hudson, Robinson, Broadway, and Gaylord. Those are the major intersections that are planned. You'll see the Chesapeake Arena in the upper right-hand portion between Hudson and Robinson to the south of the green line. That is the new proposed MAPS III park. And to the north of that location is the selected site for the new downtown convention center. So, obviously, there's a lot of great input that we've received on this section. Again, very conceptual in nature. This, again, is an ODOT rendering that's been provided to us, again, showing the usage of a lot of landscaping. But again, it's still being maintained as a four-lane boulevard with parking on both sides, a widened median. Opportunities in this section, again, would be to decrease the speed to about 25 miles an hour. So, we're looking to make it as pedestrian-friendly as possible. This is a typical intersection of what that might look like in the core, and I think you'll find that it kind of reminisces a lot of the Project 180 details that you're already seeing in downtown. Part of the process, as we started many, many months ago, was conceptualizing what the boulevard might be in that section between the park and the convention center. This perhaps gives us a lot of opportunities to work with individuals, like I mentioned, Jeff Speck, planners, landscape architects, and others, to really create something that's special for downtown Oklahoma City. This is one of the concepts, maintaining that median, looking at opportunities for maybe pedestrian plazas, looking at opportunities for future development. There's a second option that's also being investigated, neither being selected, but this one would actually create a wide retail plaza. This might be one where the median's omitted. But again, as we work forward on these designs, there's a lot of ideas. There's a lot of work that has yet to be done with the park and the convention center. Consultants have been selected on both of those projects that we anticipate are going to be very helpful as we plan this section through the core.
Eric, excuse me. And if I could have Russell's comments on this, that retail plaza, to me, to really kind of jumpstart attracting retail into the downtown area, I think we have to do something along these lines to make it innovative and to become a destination point. I'm not trying to be critical here, but I just don't see Bricktown being the retail center that some people may think it will be. I think we've got greater opportunity more on the west side of downtown for the development of retail. And I would just say, let's really strongly look at this type of development, in a sense, to kickstart retail development in the downtown area.
Russell, any thoughts?
Well, the foundation of this idea really, it comes originally from Coeur d'Alene in terms of trying to provide that source of energy along the boulevard. Since we have an expansive area of right-of-way here, we felt that we could push the right-of-way to the south and then facilitate some kind of ground-floor interactive area there for the convention center so that you don't have that, you have energy all the time that's interacting with the park. I mean, that was the idea with that.
The railroad section is the fourth section, and this has been separated by ODOT as a project. This is the crossing as we move out of the core section into Bricktown or vice versa. Obviously, there's going to be a new opportunity to create a pedestrian and vehicular underpass. This will be going under the existing railroad. Of course, we've got some experience with both Reno and Sheridan cross- both Reno and Sheridan crossings, and we're able to take advantage of that experience. We're looking at something that is very wide. We're looking at something that accommodates those four lanes of traffic, some future expansion, those 15-foot sidewalks that I mentioned, and also something that's tall enough, perhaps approximately 16 feet, to make sure that the streetcar or other large vehicles to get into and out of downtown in Bricktown. There's been some discussions on this bridge section, especially through the MAPS III Transit Subcommittee, and ODOT's working very closely to make sure that they accommodate the needs of future growth for modern rail. This would be for commuter rail or other extensions on that railroad. So we'll be able to bring additional updates to you in the future, but again, they're in the planning stages. We don't have drawings on this yet to review, but that's something that we're expecting in the future. Moving into Bricktown or this east section, and this will be the final section, looking to have this bid hopefully next spring. This is also the section that we've talked about, either the connection at Oklahoma Avenue, three traffic lanes west, two lanes east, and again landscaping. So if we move to this drawing, which I know is going to be quite small, originally, as proposed, there's existing right-of-way on Compress. You'll notice that the boulevard, you can see the old Interstate 40 alignment, you'll see the shift on this drawing best utilizing some of that Third Street right-of-way. Creates that new edge on South Bricktown or on the north side of the boulevard for that future development. But with that, Compress doesn't align itself obviously very well with Oklahoma, and so one of the goals of staff and one of the things that we're pursuing with ODOT is an Oklahoma option. That's shown here. This would allow a direct gateway right into Bricktown. Also, as we follow up on the earlier conversations by the mayor, we start talking about the steepness of grades, as we start talking about getting underneath that railroad, we obviously want to make something that's very passable, not just for cars and safety in inclement weather, but also for pedestrians, and allowing us to create that intersection at Oklahoma Avenue lengthens that distance and allows that grade to be a little shallower, a little more inviting for those that might be walking back and forth in and out of downtown in Bricktown. Again, this will extend east and make those connections to the Interstate 35. It does fly over the canal, so it does get elevated just east of the Harkins Theater that you see here. That's the big box right into the middle. So work is underway with this. Now, as we mentioned, EK Gaylord is the second of the two major downtown exits and entrances from I-40, so this section's critical to allow us to also alleviate some downtown traffic congestion that might be occurring and getting this connected as soon as possible. Generally, the schedule, and again, this is not set in stone, but generally is to begin some construction early next year. There are the five major packages. The west end and the east ends are really the most important from a downtown circulation standpoint. I believe that we do have an opportunity, as we've mentioned today, to study the Western Avenue and the bridge section, railroad bridge, a little bit more. Also, the corn section, which is vitally important to make sure that we've got a lot of input from the subcommittees as well. General goals are to complete the project in 2014.
Just want to point out one other thing on the center section. Within the last few weeks, we're in the process of negotiating contract with Jacobs, who's going to be doing the modern streetcar preliminary engineering work on that. We've just hired Hargraves as a national firm on the park that's there. We're really getting some good talent involved. The, ODOT's got a good team on the boulevard that we can bring in. We're in the process of hiring the consultant on the convention center, and the proposals are in on that. And again, we've got just some of the best, not only in the country but in the world, of folks coming in, and we've really got some really talented people involved. And we're looking at trying to get everybody together to take a look at that important core area with that, you know, some of the best talent that's out there, to come back with some recommendations, to talk about the connectivity, to talk about retail opportunities, the deciding of some things out there, and it's really kind of an exciting opportunity for that whole, that core of the boulevard that we've been talking about now for so many years.
Just, can I make a, just some questions and a comment. Boyd, can you put up that slide? Unfortunately, Pete couldn't be here. I've spoken with Pete White for hours on this topic, and we're of the same voice and mind, so I'll express some of his opinions as well. But I think, you know, to me, in medicine, we used to have physicians advertising for Camel as the cigarettes that physicians. Some things that are presented to society seem to make sense at the time, and then as the decades go by, they don't, they don't make sense. So I agree with you that there is all kinds of paper trail, starting with the Record of Decision in 2002 where it says, "This is clearly elevated," and it's all going to funnel down into 3,000 feet or whatever at grade. But we've learned, and departments of transportation across the country have learned a lot in the last 10 years. So some things that made sense in the past may not make sense. Some of the things when IMPAE was first looking at the Crosstown Expressway 40, 50 years ago, a lot of the things that they thought about then don't make sense. They tore down 1,000 buildings in downtown. That doesn't make any sense. The urban, elevated urban expressways just increasingly don't make sense. And if you have it elevated and you have 45 mile-an-hour speed limits in which people are really going to drive 55, that's not a boulevard in any sense of the word. That is an urban expressway. And what we've seen in the last 10 years, in city after city, is that when you get a chance to tear down an elevated expressway and return it and exchange it for a boulevard at grade, you get tremendous economic development. That happened in Milwaukee, that happened in Portland, that happened in Chattanooga, that happened in New York, that happened after the earthquake took down the Embarcadero in San Francisco. And in every single one of those cities, there was an outcry from traffic engineers, from civil engineers, from members of the public, that you were going to have tremendous traffic problems when you eliminated this elevated expressway and replaced it with a boulevard. And in not one of those cities did that come to fruition, not one. I mean, it's currently as bad as it's going to get right now. Whatever we do is going to alleviate things, but I think that there are, let's go, Boyd, can you go to the next? I want to just ask, start by asking you, Eric, about cost, and I want to, looking at this bridge, and this is, this is myself and others trying to look at MacArthur and Associates renderings from the Crosstown work in 2008, but, and also looking at the map of this. Tell me if any of this looks grossly inaccurate, that the bridge portion would be about 16, 50 feet, the elevated portion would be about 1,000 feet, the retaining walls would be about 1,500 feet of retaining walls, taking the north and south side combined.
I think generally the drawing that we had earlier is very close to that, yes. I think that represents well.
Now, 120 feet wide, is that, did that assume six lanes or?
You know, I think that that's still under discussion. Right now, we're looking at a four-lane, so the 120-foot probably is in question. I'm looking at the length, but the width is probably, depending on whether you have vertical walls or you lay it back or it's another design, I mean, that's probably subject to change.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. So if I look at MacArthur and Associates 2008, if you average some of the projects on the I-40, then tell me if any of this looks grossly inaccurate, that for a bridge, square footage, about $120 a square foot. Would that, would that be accurate?
And I would defer to ODOT as their engineers have looked at this. So I mean, this would be something very much, they've got some recent cost experience in looking at the differences in some of the designs. So I would defer to ODOT on really answering that.
One problem is I've never seen an itemized budget of how the $85 or $100 million is going to be spent. I don't know what the Western Classen Reno Bridge or Elevated Embankment is going to cost. And so if, for me, trying to make a decision between that and at-grade alternatives, I desperately need some sense of cost. And so would it, would it be, I mean, I'm coming up with 25 million. Let's say it's, is 20 million a conservative number?
My guess is the best way to approach is when we look at the different alternatives is to cost them at the same time and then look at them objectively from that standpoint. I think it's hard to pull out of context maybe one particular estimate that might be older, but I think we want to take the opportunity that we discussed earlier, if we could give, be given the latitude from council to engage a consultant to look at all options, bridge, grade, roundabout, maybe, I mean, we were even subjected, maybe underground? I don't know, but I mean, whether it's up, down, or around, let's look at all those options and cost them appropriately, and then help make that decision.
Well, I would second that. I would second Meg. I desperately want that. But I would also want to know if you, if anybody, ODOT, would take issue with $25 a cubic yard for embankment, $500 a square yard for retaining walls, and $120 per square foot for the bridge?
You know, Councilman, I think those are unfair questions.
Okay.
Because I think that there's not enough facts available to determine how those estimates were prepared. You slide up like this, there's some great numbers up there. They may be exactly out of the report. However, nobody knows the basis for those numbers, and I think it's unfair to Eric to ask him to confirm are those good numbers or not.
And I'm not asking about theoretical. I'm asking for a range of numbers.
I understand that, but initially you ask if these are good numbers.
Okay.
And I think that's an unfair question.
It's tough without knowing all the parameters out there. It's just talking about, you know, what's a foot of pipe worth? Well, it depends whether the foot of pipe is underneath dirt or you've got pavement on the top you've got to replace. There's a lot of different, unless you put all the parameters, you're putting us in a kind of a tough position to answer.
Then a wide range.
Well, I would tell you from a retaining wall standpoint, the walls that we're looking at are segmental walls. They're very different than structural retaining walls, and the cost is compounded, you know, just depending on the wall design. So it is. It's really difficult to answer without having the design.
Okay.
It'd be best if we could do a takeoff approach, but if we knew what the design was, we could get those estimates, yes.
Well, I'm kind of confused. I saw one of the things that Meg was asking for was to hire a consultant to look at various alternatives, and I thought that intended, an underlying assumption with that would be that each alternative would have its own cost parameters there, so we would see a functional picture of what that alternative would look like, and we'd see how many dollars it was going to cost to do it. And so to decide whether dirt costs this or that right now seems to be premature to me.
That's, all I'm asking for is a cost assessment of the bridge, which right now we don't have. Okay, next slide. I want to ask about traffic counts because it was reported in the paper, ODOT was telling Mr. Lackmire that they expected traffic counts on this boulevard of about 94,000 cars a day. And so I'm wondering, I mean, that, that would be roughly what the traffic count on the old I-40 was in 2009. Where does that number come from? Do you think that's an accurate number? What kind of traffic are we expecting to deal with on this boulevard?
I think a lot of it's subject to future predictions. There's obviously different traffic models. I think, as I read as well, Mr. Gary Evans said that that was based on an ODOT model that they use to calculate traffic projections. But, you know, I think that we've had our own independent studies with traffic engineering consultants, and I think, you know, the numbers are generally, generally in agreement. I think as we expect downtown to grow, I think the traffic's going to increase. So I think some of the numbers that we're seeing, I think some of them are speculative, but again, I think that we're looking at future growth. I do think that we're going to see traffic increase in downtown as we develop.
But we do have one study, right, which is the URS study?
We have multiple studies. URS is one of those, yes.
And URS, when they, their estimate was that the boulevard is estimated to carry between 19,000 and 26,000 vehicles per day in 2030. So I'm wondering how we get, that's, to me, that's the only study. We had the study in 2009 on Project 180, but 2007 comes up with a number of 19,000 to 26,000 vehicles per day in 2030, and I'm wondering how we get from that, which is, to my knowledge, the only study we've done, to 94,000 vehicles a day.
You know, I've got to defer ODOT to their numbers, but I think as we work to look at this together, I think the, part of the presentation has been a lot of change. You know, we now have a Thunder basketball program. We now have continued downtown development. A lot of design is based on peak loads and not just average daily traffic, and so I think you've got to take a lot of things into consideration. But the 94,000 that you show here is an ODOT number. You know, we would support the previous studies that have been completed based on the data that they had at that time. We'd support a future study for any new data that might be available. I think those are going to change.
Eric, would you support the statement by Amy Lewin, the URS public engineer, who said in building our detailed peak hour traffic estimates, "We found that the proposed boulevard configuration performs very, very well, possibly even a little too well"?
I can't comment on that. I, it's his statement.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment on the, on the numbers that you just mentioned, Councilman? That 19,000-plus was really, I believe, their projection for that at-grade portion, so the, from Walker to Oklahoma section. That would be the genesis of that estimate at that point in time, recognizing that that western portion was going to have more lanes associated with it, but the four lanes on the at-grade portion, that was the projection there. So similar to what we would expect for other core city streets.
But at that time, did they know that there was going to be multiple entrances on the boulevard, or did they think it was a limited access point at Lee when it starts to go above grade?
Exactly that.
Okay. Next slide. Next slide, this is ACOG traffic counts. Next slide. I just want to point out, this is two, two examples of roundabouts. One is in Halifax, Nova Scotia. The idea that roundabouts can't move a lot of traffic is not accurate. This is a five-leg, which has been some of what's proposed, a double-lane roundabout that costs about $4.5 million to design and build and moves about 5,500 vehicles per hour. The Friends for Better Boulevard is having a town hall meeting in a couple of weeks, and the gentleman who designed that is coming to speak. Boyd, can you exit out of that and just do the webcam? Orston. So that's what that looks like. This is a live webcam view of that, and I just want to just give a sense of what something like that would look like, and just note that in, in contradistinction to traffic circles, people, everybody entering has to yield to the traffic that's in the center. You can have bicycle lanes, they can, you can have bicycles. True, the pedestrians don't walk into the center portion, but they can walk around on the intersections. But that's, that's a sense of what that would look like. Can you go back to what? Yeah. Then in East Pershing, they took, they took federal funds and they, and they put a roundabout on an existing boulevard, also moved about 4,500 vehicles an hour and cost $3.5 million. What's interesting about that is that the Federal Highway Administration granted them a categorical exclusion, so they ruled that they didn't need an EA or an EIS. Can you go to the next slide? People have spoken with the Federal Highway Administration about our particular situation, and member, people from the Federal Highway Administration have indicated to them that in terms of noise, historic land use, and hazardous waste, we would not need to study any more of this in terms of environmental impact were we to go to an at-grade alternative. Next. And then I would just echo what's, to study everything, combinations of slip lanes, roundabouts, double roundabouts, synchronized traffic intersection, or some combination of any or all of them together. I think this is, this is one thing that I would like studied. This is a slip lane in which you can enter these bifurcating ramps on, off of Western. You can enter the boulevard going one way, but not the other way. So in each, on each side, you can exit one way and you can enter on one side. It's not ideal. It's not like a four-way intersection, but it doesn't, you don't have to have a signalized intersection, and it allows some increased access. It may be a solution for Western. Next slide. Yeah.
Just a second. I think this is a great example. We talked about a compromise of things that are going, because if you do that, there's a couple of things that are going to happen. One, you're adding two traffic signals. I'm not saying that's acceptable or not acceptable, but that will certainly have an impact on the functionality. You're also not bringing Western all the way through. Good idea, bad idea, I don't know. I would guess some people that have businesses out there may have an opinion on that. And the same thing with Reno, not going through their slip lanes to go along. I'm not saying that that won't work. I'm just saying that there's compromises and there's pros and cons as you go forward. This is a concept that I believe is worth studying.
Yeah.
And I'm not, but it's clearly a compromise as you go through there, as what you're doing based upon accessibility and functionality and other things else that everyone else does.
I have no idea if it would work. I'm just, I'm asking for the same thing, just to study all at-grade alternatives.
But I think that's a really good example of it. It illustrates some of the, so the pros and cons of impacts that would happen in the area and how it would affect different aspects of it.
Next slide. And this is just another example of combining a small roundabout with slip lanes and one signalized intersection. So that's, I think, I think I've covered it. I just, to cover all, all at-grade alternatives.
And we agree. That's something that we'd like to move forward on.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
The only other thing I might ask is that we, is that we address the Transit Subcommittee's recommendations at the same time, since we're dealing with this at this time, and ODOT's here to hear.
It'll be done shortly. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak on this report, and then we'll be going on to that. All right, we have a number of people that have signed up to speak. We'll allow three minutes apiece, and I'll call them up in the name, in the order they've been handed to me. Bert McInally? Good afternoon, or I guess it's still morning. Good morning, Bert. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bert McInally, 1709 Dorchester Place. I have a business at 311 South Klein. I am, I'm the owner of the underutilized farmer's market. Couple of things, I'm not an engineer. I have no solutions. I come to you with what I see as a potential problem, perpetuation of a of a pre-existing problem. Anytime you have elevated roadways or boulevards, there's, I think, urban blight associated with that. If you doubt me, could drive up and down where I-40 was, used to be. Tell me what you see. That effectively cut that section of Oklahoma City from I-40 south to the river off from the rest of Oklahoma City. We have an excellent opportunity right now in Oklahoma City. We're on the map. We've got a wonderful basketball team. We've done great, wonderful things with maps. We've beautified downtown. We've made it more conducive to people, for people to move back to the core of the city, fill in that doughnut that so often happens in large cities. We need to think not for the next five or 10 years, but we need to think for the future. We talked about historically and some of the historic things about the roadway being elevated and this and that. I'd like to remind the council, if you have access, to the 2004 Riverfront Redevelopment Authority's plan for that space between Meridian and Eastern that was created basically by forming the Oklahoma River as opposed to the North Canadian River that would make that eligible for development, develop that whole area of the river, not just the corridor shore from downtown and then south to the old cotton plant and all of that. I think that if building an elevated roadway would impede that and would impede the progress of that development. The original Riverfront Redevelopment Authority called for pedestrian-friendly boutique-type shops, whatnot. Called for a farmer's market district with my building being the salient architectural feature. I've spent about a million and a half dollars on that building. That's in addition to buying the building. I've just recently put a new roof on that building. We are self-funded. The city has helped me in the sense that they've basically left me alone. I've been to the city. I've been to the city. I've asked you for help. I asked you for lighting. I asked you for infrastructure. Go down and look at my lighting and my infrastructure. So, you know, I was a little bit reluctant to come forward because I haven't received a lot of support from the city. Of course, I really haven't asked for that much support. What I would encourage and urge this council to do and the city of Oklahoma City to do is explore all of the options and look at it from a perspective of not only today, but five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. My business, unlike a lot of businesses-
Bert, I need you to wrap it up soon.
Okay. My business, unlike a lot of businesses, is destination-oriented. And this doesn't affect my business. It affects my property values and my neighbors' property values. So in summation, I would just urge you to all look at all of the opportunities and all of the options and take some time out of your day. Come down to the farmer's market on the 13th for the town hall meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bert. Nick Roberts.
Morning, Mayor, council citizens. My name is Nick Roberts. 528 Waterville Road. I want to begin with the question of what is public life in Oklahoma City? What is the realm? Where is the realm that it exists? For example, where are you most likely to see me on the street? Or where are you most likely to see the person sitting next to you on the street? In, in a city that does not have sidewalks uniformly anywhere, the answer is nowhere. The, the answer is that we don't have public life, and there is not really much of a public realm in Oklahoma City. But we're trying to get there. We've, we've identified the problem for the last 20 years or so, and we've been expeditiously working to solve the problem of walkability, to solve the problem of sense of place. And this boulevard was promised to us, probably more rhetorically than factually now that we realize. But this boulevard was promised to us as a panacea of sorts for, for what ails our city in terms of sense of place. We, we were promised this boulevard that would be a postcard opportunity that would sell our city visually, experientially, and in other terms. And what we're being promised is something that, that downgrades that hope. What we're being promised is something that has virtually no opportunity for private development due to the park, due to the Justice Speakerina, due to the convention center. So in addition to those public projects, aside from the intersection with Walker, I would ask you guys, where is the private market supposed to create a public realm? Where, where are we going to create economic development along this boulevard as it's planned? However, if you extend the at-grade portion west to Western, and you take advantage of what's happening around Film Row with developers like Chip Fudge, who's invested millions and millions into those old buildings in Film Row, suggesting that if the boulevard is at-grade, as he hopes it will be, that the southwest side of downtown could be that next hotspot. I think that's very viable. Also, if you guys drive down Southwest Third between Walker and Western, you'll notice a potentially fully intact historic district blocks long, all along Southwest Third with tremendous potential. And then go past the farmer's market, which again, tremendous potential, up Klein Avenue. You'll notice again, Klein Avenue is bounded on both sides by a surprisingly intact street wall with old buildings that have excellent potential for being renovated. The city is currently putting out an RFP for the old city jail. The Fred Jones, Fred Jones factory is going to be rehabilitated eventually. OCU Law was going to do it, but they decided to go midtown instead. However, they're still seeking out tenants to, to buy that building. I believe that the Gulp bond includes funding for Carson Boulevard to be reconstructed between 16th Street and Sheridan, although I'm a bit fuzzy on that. And, and Western Avenue's gridlock, to me, is the best possible, is, is the best potential place to develop downtown retail. One of the problems that we've encountered with downtown retail, aside from lacking rooftops in the area, is that we lack traffic counts. That's not a problem on Western Avenue, and that would not be a problem along the boulevard. And I think that you guys really have to look at on the face what the Friends for a Better Boulevard is proposing. And that is not just the roundabout, but also what's inside the roundabout, what would be developed around the roundabout, with, inside the roundabout being a potential archway, something iconic, a gateway element of sorts to welcome people.
Nick, I, I need you to wrap it up.
And lastly, I'm concerned about whether planning has been invited into the fold of the discussion on this project. It was very enlightening to see some comments from planning today. But I was concerned by the suggestion earlier to have, to hire another traffic engineer. I do not feel that there's been a shortage of traffic engineers, not that there's anything wrong with traffic engineers, but I, I just don't feel that there's been a shortage of traffic engineers designing this project. And I would really encourage you guys to hire a planner, an environmental design specialist, a, an architect, or somebody, just anybody other than a public planner, I mean, a public engineer, so that we have a confluence of different ideas designing this, this traffic circle or roundabout, or slip lanes, or traditional intersections, or whatever we might go with.
Mike Smith.
My name's Mike Smith. 1207 Southwest Second Street. It's across the street from the farmer's market. And I own several pieces of property in that area. I restored one at Maine in Pennsylvania. The copper thieves went in there and stole everything out of it. You can't maintain anything in that area. And when you have a, a overpass, it's going to be deteriorated. Pigeons are going to take over first, then homeless people. It doesn't work. I lived in Milwaukee. I lived in Chicago. Every time you see a, a overpass, it's a disaster. You don't have any access from Pennsylvania to Western for our neighborhood. You just eliminated us. And then the shrubberies along the I-40 now, that's hobo camps. That's where the homeless people live. They're shopping carts to take our copper to the market. You know. I'm done.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Andrew Stewart.
Good morning. Andrew Stewart, 15, 1715 North Gatewood, Oklahoma City, just the Posit District. Come to you this morning. I'm part of the Friends for a Better Boulevard and the author of Market Circle Concept and many of the other concepts that have been floating around. Just so you can blame all those things on me. They're just ideas. Just want to talk, discussion, and I'm glad to see that's happening. Rather than stand up here and preach the gospel of roundabouts, I would like to kind of give you a personal anecdote with my experience with downtown, some of my earliest experiences. I grew up in the metropolitan area, Edmond to be precise. One of my first memories of coming downtown was coming to a newly opened Myriad Gardens with my grandparents. At the time, as I drove into downtown, my grandparents told me, keep the corridors locked. Don't talk to anybody. Watch out. There's people out here that will harm you. It's a dangerous place. 20 years later, I've actually moved over by the Posit District. I'm starting a family over there. I have two little girls. Those same mean streets that I was afraid of as a child, I ride a bicycle on with my two little girls in tow. And of all places, we go to the Myriad Gardens. It's where we, where we like to enjoy our time together. The city's come a long ways. Many that, many of those accomplishments are due to bold visionary leaders, people who didn't see circumstances and react to them, but saw possibilities and rose to those occasions. I believe in this city. I believe in our future. I believe we can accomplish great things. And I would encourage you, the council, to continue that legacy, make the right decision for our city in regards to this boulevard, and make the right decision for the future of citizens of this city, my little girls, who will be living here as best as I can tell for a long future. And again, I would encourage you to consider this, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andrew. David Dickerson.
Good morning. David Dickerson, 18033 Cristobal Boulevard. It's actually Edmond, but it's really Ward 8. So I'm one of those people. I'm probably the least likely person you might expect to come down here and talk about this street in the middle of downtown. But the reason I got involved with this group is that it's opportunity or opportunity lost. What are we talking about 20 years? The things that I've seen in this city, I'm a 10-year resident here. It's just been phenomenal, the changes that has been done, in no large, no small part to what you guys have done up here. So it's a really cool place to live now. The corridor shore vision is really a great idea and a nice concept. And I'm one of those people that would probably come live there. But if you build this elevated freeway, you're going to inhibit the growth through the western end of that. And I don't want that in my backyard. So what you might be doing by inhibiting the growth in that western portion is actually limiting what you can do in the corridor shore, as a matter of fact. So all I would say is, is that take the time. I mean, you guys have talked about taking the time to do it right. 2014 is not a hard and fast deadline. Take the time and do things right again. You know, it's not a big deal. I mean, I think most citizens like me would support that. You know, 2014, traffic will be okay. We can figure out how to drive around downtown. So that's about it.
All right. Thanks, David. Dave Filkins.
Dave Filkins, 9404 Buttonwood Avenue, South Side. I have the Beatniks Cafe, and I've met many of you there. Thank you for coming. I'm here today simply to say, kind of be a cheerleader for what you guys are doing. I know you, you struggle when we're talking about we're going to have to compromise. I'm here today because the people who come through the cafe have taught me more things than I could have ever imagined about different viewpoints. And I think that, I think you mentioned that we're going to have to compromise. But that's really not a bad thing if, in the process of compromising, all these great ideas are put together and we boil those down and come up with the best ideas of those. Our city has made such great, great strides. And I'm one of the biggest cheerleaders for our town. I have lots of visitors come through, and we're able to point out so many of those things. We'll have somebody come in and he'll complain about things that are happening. I said, "Don't complain. This is the best thing that could happen. We're making great improvements." And I thank you for what you're doing. And I really hope that with the recent things that have been brought up and the questions about which direction to go, that you will pool this great resource of minds that we have and continue to, to dig into this a little bit, because I think it's a potentially very critical point of decision about where we go from here. And, and I have every confidence, based on what we've done the, the past 10 or 15 years, that you're going to make a great decision. But I think this part of the boulevard is going to be very critical. And my input from customers and people that come through the cafe is, many people were not expecting a raised section of that boulevard to go through. So please carefully consider what the options are, and I'm confident that the decision will, depending on the cost, will be the best decision based upon what the return is going to be for our city. Thank you.
To summarize this, I, I think staff has direction to go, come back and hire some, fairly quickly, some, some outside professionals to assist us in evaluating other options and bring those options back to council.
I've got a couple, couple of questions in the summary, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay.
Eric, you might as well get up. You're, you're going to have to do a nod or a yes or no probably for some of the. Has the decision already been made to bring the east section down quick enough to get to Oklahoma and, and be able to get underneath the bridge?
Yes.
Okay. So that's moving forward, and we're dealing with trying to get the easement through for Oklahoma.
The city will take that challenge. But yes, that's something that we're getting ready to investigate. So contacts have just been made, but that's just starting.
So ODOT knows what grade they need to come down at to give us an Oklahoma intersection instead of a-
Compress.
Compress intersection. Is that correct?
They do.
Okay. And we know what depth we need underneath the railroad tracks. So that section of the project can keep moving forward. Is that correct?
It can.
Okay. Moving to the west end. If we're going to keep the Sheridan on-ramp and the Reno Western off-ramp intact, I assume, no matter what, then what you're calling the west section of this could continue to move forward.
I think there's one caveat, and, and that would be Councilman Shadid's comment about Klein Avenue. If there is an interest to be below, or I should say, on the ground before Western, that's something that's got to be considered now, because currently that's not in the plan. We have to get back over Western if the ultimate solution or the option that's selected to get over Western, I mean, that, that's a critical decision that has to be made. So that's currently in that west plan. So if we're going to go over Western or go at-grade at Western, I mean, that's, that's, that's got to be decided.
But, and I've traveled that intersection a jillion times. I believe the Sheridan on-ramp is already at-grade.
It is.
The Reno off-ramp is already at-grade?
Yes.
Okay. So you, if you just dealt with from the on-ramp, off-ramp, west, they could continue on with that project? Because if, even if you're going to bring it down, you wouldn't, you'd, you'd start doing that about where those ramps are. Does that be right?
I, I think that's possible, and we could visit with ODOT on the specifics. But yes, I think that's possible.
I'm just trying to get to a solution where we don't take 20 years to do what we're talking about doing here. So there, there are some things that ODOT could continue to work on and continue to do, even with the discussions that we're having here today.
I believe so. And, and I think the support of the council to, to continue looking on the west connection to alleviate concerns on Western, and to look at the east to alleviate concerns on the Gaylord connection would be helpful for ODOT to proceed.
Did I hear you, as I, just before I started talking, Mr. Council, did I hear you say that you, you've assumed this council wants you to hire a study done to give us multiple options for the west end?
That's what I thought I heard. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and we're thinking how long that's going to take?
I don't have an answer for you at this time, Councilman Mars. But I, I do know that we want to, we don't want to go so fast that we don't, aren't prudent and deliberate in, in our process. But we also want to go fast enough that we don't impact the ultimate schedule of, of what we're trying to accomplish. There are, you know, as we speak today, there are people that are seeing through multiple lights down at, down at Western because of of, of this boulevard not being in. So we do need to, to be aware of that and, and move forward. But again, at the other time, not being hasty as we go through and not being able to take all things into consideration.
But to clarify, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. Well, just to clarify with Gary, so basically, once you decide where it goes at-grade, whether it's Douglas or Western, then I think what, you can work from the outside in. You can do your Western and Eastern connections, and that buys you some time to work on the middle portion that's-
That's what we're looking at, and that's what Councilman Mars, I think, is getting, getting to. I think what Eric is saying is, this is all kind of new. I think what Eric is saying is, this is all kind of new, and we're a little unclear of how that impacts Western by keeping our options open to make that either above-grade or at-grade. And so I think Eric's very hesitant, again, to make a commitment on that without, this is kind of new, that we're going in this direction, and to see, we need to study that a little bit before we go too fast. It may be fine, it may be just as Councilman Mars has lined out, that we go ahead and go to point X and stop there, and then go up or down at that point. I think we're just a little hesitant at this point in time to say, absolutely that's going to work.
From what I saw, what I thought I saw was that what they're calling the west section project probably came all the way up just short of Western. And what I was talking about is if you just back that up to where the on-ramp, Sheridan on-ramp is, you're at-grade anyway. And you can probably go from there west and continue on with your rehab and everything else.
And I've seen some nods from Mr. Stravich and Mr. Evans in the audience, which, so they're tracking with you on that, Counsel.
Then the last thing, where are we at on what we're calling the center section? Or is there, is there still some discussion about a decision needs to be made for any of that as it pertains to the streetcar, which could modify it again? I'm just trying to get an understanding of how much we're delaying ODOT and what they're trying to accomplish and what we ask them to do to begin with, so.
And Counselman, on that one, I think we'd like to, because of the advent of all the new folks that we've got involved, whether it's Hargraves and Jacobs and all those folks, I don't think it's going to impact ODOT's schedule if they're able to work on the ends for us to spend a little more time and get those professionals together and help us come up with a concept for that key part of the at-grade boulevard. And so the answer is, that's the next phase, and we've still got some decisions that have yet to be made on that.
Well, and I'll just finish with an editorial comment. It's, I just believe with all of the notoriety that this has gotten over the last few weeks, and actually months, I've heard it, I heard it for quite a while in different little circles, but now it's starting to get more and more public. Traffic engineers, as the chuckle went through the audience a while ago, and specifically ODOT, are not the enemy in this thing. They are doing exactly what we've asked them to do. And in fact, they have bent over backwards whenever time we threw something else out there, whatever harebrained idea was, what are you going to do about this? We need to lower this. How are you going to change this? They've worked with the city every time that we've asked them to work with us on something. So I'm a little concerned that the viewing audience, when they're reading the little snippets they get, that they think ODOT's not talking to the city, ODOT's trying to strong-arm the city, ODOT's trying to be the bad guy in this, and that is absolutely not true. And I think that it's important for everybody to understand that this thing has progressed up to the point that all this discussion happened exactly the way that ODOT and the city were communicating that it was going to happen. Is it a bad thing that we've decided that we want to maybe relook at everything? No, it's not. All this discussion about, we need to relook at it, it happened a long time ago, we need to compromise, all that stuff, we understand all of that. But nothing happened in a vacuum. Nothing got shoved down the city's throat, and nothing is going to happen that the city doesn't have a say-so in. So again, that's just my editorial soapbox. I really don't like the fact that there's been some people painted as not being cooperative in all of this stuff.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. I heard you had to speak, but apparently it got lost in the show.
Now, you asked to speak under Citizens to Be Heard, which we haven't reached yet.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I would just like to echo Councilman Mars' comments, but mine goes more towards, first of all, I want to thank and recognize the city of Oklahoma City's staff, from the planning department, to public works, to anybody that has had any inch of involvement as it relates to this program and as it relates to this project. And I think to some degree, it's kind of disingenuous for some people to come before and basically throw them up under the bus. And I personally want to let everybody know that every question that I have asked, every comment, every editorial that I have showed them, they have taken the time to meet, to discuss, to share in reference to what they have received, in reference to what ODOT, and in reference to what the historical beginning of this project was started with. And I think sometimes, you know, this whole concept about the different plans has been taken in a way that our staff have not been attentive to those concerns of individuals, and I don't think that's true. And so I just want to thank staff, first of all, for the level of engagement that you all have provided in educating members of this council on a one-on-one basis, on a group basis. And, you know, as we look at this, the totality of this program, the totality of this project, it's not like it's the first time the city of Oklahoma City has taken on a major, major endeavor that created change. And then you look back in history, and true enough, there's been some major endeavors that we have taken on, that we've made some mistakes, that, you know, people will admit that if I had to do it all over again, I would do something different. And so all those things have to be taken into consideration. But the one thing I think we have to be mindful of is that none of us have a pure crystal ball to predict and give an accurate determination of what's going to happen 30 years from now, 40 years from now. But at the same time, we are mindful of what we can create today and hope that it grows into something bigger and greater 30 and 40 years from now. And so to that extent, I mean, we all got to do this to get along with each other. I don't want anybody to think that this is a division and enemies over here and supporters over here, because that's not the way we want to do this. And it's not what I'm involved in it for. But I think that one thing we're going to have to be mindful of, and at some point in time, none of us is going to be satisfied 100%. I mean, and you can battle with consultants all day long, you can battle with engineers all day long, and you can battle with people who write all day long, and you're going to ultimately have some different opinions and different views. And so probably the most important word that's been mentioned through this whole debate and this whole conversation today is what Councilman Ryan said, and that is, we're going to have to sit down and compromise. And so I just want everyone to know that I think that this is a time that we need to start looking at ourselves in reference to saying that we are willing to sit down and be peaceful with each other in reference to our conversations and in reference to the future of Oklahoma City as it relates to this major endeavor. And stop, you know, this conversation about, you know, they didn't tell us this, and staff is not being, you know, communicating to council. You know, there was several comments that came out, said that, you know, we were just being blindsided, that, you know, this train was running down the tracks and staff wasn't, I mean, saying the council didn't have a clue of where it was going and how fast it was going. And that's not true. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe I need to make a disclosure before going further. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of Oklahoma. And that being said, that being said, I was not involved in any of the workshop meetings, although Eric and Dennis were, who are engineers, that did have people put in. But also was Russell Klaus and his staff, who had five, we had five different planning people that were involved with the workshops, with ODOT on the process, as well as guest appearances by Mayor Cornet throughout the process that have been there. So there have been engineers involved, but it has not been totally an engineer-driven process.
Could I just have Eric, if you would, in conjunction with what Skip said, in conjunction with what Chief Mars said, when we started this, about where we are right now, if I remember correctly now, I just want to put this in perspective for myself, there were five construction projects involved in this project that we envisioned.
Yes, ODOT has five.
Five, okay. And one of the projects was the east end, which was the I-35 into Bricktown, I'm going to call it, contract.
Yes.
And that project is going on right now, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of discussion over that, the way it's going, that that can move ahead and be done.
The plans aren't complete on that yet, they're still finishing them.
But there's not, very little debate over some of the details.
I haven't heard any today.
The second portion of that contract was from Bricktown or from Oklahoma through downtown, where it's at-grade portion, and that's another piece of the puzzle. And there's work going on to try to tie in and put that into perspective of what that will actually look like.
Yes.
Okay. And the third, as we continue west, is the elevated, if it's elevated, the elevated portion from roughly Walker into the Western Avenue area, and that elevated area right there. And that depends on whether or not the boulevard stays elevated through the Western Avenue interchange or roundabout.
Yes.
And then the roundabout is a solution to get that particular portion of the boulevard done. The roundabout's one perspective, and there are other options that Dr. Shadid put out there, and that's really an area that we need some help on to try to come up with, what are we going to do there?
We'd like to do that, yes.
Okay. Then the far western portion, though, from, say, Western Avenue out to Pennsylvania, I heard some people say that they would like that at-grade, whereas the current construction plans, if I have heard right, were going to leave it as it is right now. Some of it would be at-grade, but some of it would be elevated with the berms.
The objective is to rehabilitate the existing roadway, which is already on a berm, but it'll be narrower. It won't be an interstate, it'll be a four-lane median boulevard with potentially landscaping. But yes, it'll be on the same grade, it'll be on the berms, but it'll be modified.
Now, with the consultant that we get in, would he or she look at that portion also of the puzzle? Or is that puzzle, is that train already left the track?
I don't know that there's questions to look at that right now. I don't know that there's a need to do that, so I didn't hear that today.
Thank you very much for your time.
Just, go ahead.
I was going on the sales staff report, so.
I just want to say one last thing on process, and that's, I'm not interested in throwing anybody under the bus or assigning blame, there's plenty of blame to go around for this notion that, or this, that seemingly people were caught off-guard. I mean, I start with myself. I own, I could have asked for the plans, and it clearly would have been there. I could have asked for all this documentation, it clearly would have been there that this is all elevated. I didn't. But something seems to be wrong with the process where so many people are caught off-guard. I talked to Ann Simak, who was involved in this for years. She, on Sunday, said she's completely caught off-guard, had no idea that Western Carson Reno was going to be elevated. Basically, the entire council is on record as saying they didn't understand that Western Carson Reno was going to be above-grade. The public is clearly caught off-guard. I don't know what the answer is, I honestly don't. I'm just saying that I think that we need to look for solutions on how we can, obviously we can't know about every project, but this is a $100 million infrastructure project through the middle of downtown. And so ways that we can tweak the process to improve communication so we're not caught off-guard. Thank you.
All of the council is not caught off-guard. I hate people to characterize all of the council. I'm worried on all of the council, but.
Well, everyone else other than you is on record, I believe, so.